My name is Dean Markham. I'm chairman of the town council. I'd like to call this public hearing a regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty second, two thousand and twenty five to order. Did I say that wrong?
No.
No, we're good.
Oh. Would you please rise and join me in pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, in this law, the Constitution. Agenda number, item number two, adoption of agenda.
They're moved.
This motion to accept, is there a second? Second, is there any discussion, changes? The agenda? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Then it's adopted. Item three, approval of minutes, regular meeting of April eighth, two thousand and twenty five.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any errors, deficiencies, or additions to the minutes? I will point out one, that under appointments, I had appointed Karen Wonat to the be the representative to the Plan of Conservation and Development Commission that is going to be established shortly. And the secretary will correct that in the minutes. Is there any other discussion? If not, those in favor are accepting the minutes. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Minutes are accepted. Judge, agenda item four. Public hearing on the recommended fiscal year two thousand and twenty five dash two thousand and twenty six, general government, board of education, debt service, and capital improvement budgets. You'll probably see a couple things different, or a little different in the structure of this. Most of you probably saw the handout that we prepared. It establishes the rules of protocol for the public hearings, particularly in larger hearings like this one is or could be. Essentially, it gives every citizen who wishes to speak an opportunity to do so. You're limited to three minutes. The clerk will give the speaker fifteen seconds, high sign, finish up. And at three minutes, we will shut it down, shut that person down. It gives everybody the same fair opportunity time to speak. If you desire to make public remarks, you can line up over by the corner of the recording table. I'll recognize you. Please give your name and address for the record. I'm just making sure. The topic, as you all well know, or should know, is the this is the first opportunity, or second opportunity, we received the budget a couple weeks ago, but this is the first opportunity to hear the public's thoughts on that, your thoughts, either pro or con, or things you wish would be changed. We're here to listen. We're not going to entertain debate or answer questions tonight. We'll be doing that over the next several weeks. We have until, I believe, the thirteenth of May to set a, send the budget to referendum. Conduct with all is civility to one another. Please respect everyone's thoughts and opinions and keep your comments to yourself or until you get home. Written testimony or emails can be directed to the council through the manager's office if you wish to make your presentation that way. You can even make it a voice copy, or recording, and send that, and it will go in on the record. And the council doesn't want to discourage anyone from speaking, but if your remarks are similar or redundant to others that have spoken before you, you might just note your agreement or concurrence or disagreement and stick to new, new thoughts or points that you want to bring up. And I guess, lastly, adoption of the annual budget is one of our most important duties in the council. Tonight is not the end of the process, but it's a step along the way that started back about five months ago. By the first week of June, a complete budget will be sent to referendum where you can cast your vote. I thank you for your attention. And if anyone would like to make public testimony, do that. Eric?
Thank you, town council and town manager Cox. My name's Eric Rosenberg, fifteen Bay Road, and I chair the Commission on Aging. I'm here tonight to support the senior center budget. And my theme may be novel in a budget hearing. My theme is appreciation. The Commission on Aging appreciates that the town council is aware of the growing population of older adults in our town, nearly twenty percent and rapidly increasing. The Commission on Aging appreciates that when three of its members researched a comparison of our senior center with those of other senior centers in nearby similar towns, and also with national trends and standards, and then presented the information to you in November in a white paper and in a presentation, that you understood that there was room for improvement of our senior center, both in the short term and the long term. We appreciated that you then created the Senior Center and Services Task Force to work on these short and long-term solutions. Some short-term work such as painting has already been done. Tonight's focus is the next fiscal year. We are definitely disappointed that the repeatedly requested full-time position at the senior center has once again not been granted. That said, we do appreciate that the Board of Finance recommended an additional part-time driver to partially handle the seniors' large need for transportation, to medical appointments, getting to and from the senior center, and other necessary errands. We would appreciate it if you would also support this expenditure as, as the Board of Finance had recommended, and otherwise preserve the remaining budgetary requests that were approved by the town manager and Board of Finance. Thank you. I appreciate your time and service.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that we not burst into applause with every speaker. I'd like to get home by midnight. You can save it all up for the end of the evening.
Alana Kachow, twenty-six Shipyard Road. Milton Friedman, the celebrated economist, believed controlling spending was the most effective way to reduce taxes, and that taxpayers should pay attention to government spending for that reason. Well, the Board of Ed has been spending out of control, and our taxes have increased accordingly. I am asking the town council to limit the education budget to an increase of three point five percent at most. It's a bloated beast, and the worst thing they can do is feed the beast. We, as taxpayers, can't afford out-of-control spending. If we can spend, if we can control spending, we can control the taxes according to Friedman. Supposed to talk to you. So I think it's important that the taxpayers pay attention to what's happening with their spending in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Alana. Holly.
Hi, Holly Marrero from the senior center in town. Good evening, members of the town council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight as you review the senior center budget. I want to highlight the continued growth and importance of our center to the community. Since the last fiscal year, we have welcomed forty-six new members with a total active membership rising from four hundred and eighty-seven to five hundred and thirty, a nine percent increase. We've also seen a modest but notable increase in out-of-town memberships of zero point six percent. These numbers reflect the growing need for a vibrant and inclusive space where older adults can engage, connect, and thrive. Our membership grows. We want to ensure the senior center remains a welcoming, comfortable, and well-maintained space for all those who visit. While the modernization plan for the center is in its beginning stages, there are a few areas that could benefit from updates to keep things running smoothly and safely. Although the request for a full-time employee was not improved in the budget, we sincerely appreciate that the Board of Finance added the part-time bus driver as a much-needed addition given to the high demand for transportation services. It's also important to note that senior services was allotted just zero point three six percent of the twenty-four, twenty-five tax dollars. We respectfully ask that the council to consider how essential this resource is for our expanding aging population, and to recognize the impact that even a modest increase in support can have on the lives of so many older adults in our town. Thank you for considering the needs of our community in your decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Kelly Snyder. I live at eighteen Laurel Glen Drive. I am in a unique position since I live in town and I teach kindergarten at Memorial School. I've been in education for the last twenty-four years and have worked in Hartford, Glasson Berry, Fairfield, and of course, here in East Hampton. And let me tell you, we are very fortunate to have amazing schools. We have an amazing school system with the top-notch educators. I've had the privilege of walking into each of our schools and seeing firsthand the curriculum and support our students, including my own three daughters, receive, and I am proud of the amazing work we do here in East Hampton. It takes a village to educate our students, and I am proud to be among the best of the best. I want to thank the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, and you, the town council, for your dedication to our town. I want to take, thank the superintendent, our administrators. I want to thank central office. It's really taken a village, I know, to put this budget together, and I know there's no easy answers. However, I want to make it very clear that my stance is we cannot afford to lose any more teachers and support staff. I'm not sure if the community is aware, but twenty-seven teachers and support staff received pink noses. It's absolutely ridiculous to even think that we could lose a couple teachers. We are bare bones as it is. And we all know that in East Hampton, once we lose, once we cut, it is very rare to get those positions back. There was a comment at the last meeting where an individual questioned why a kindergarten position wasn't cut when the numbers of students went down. And this question really does solidify the fact that there are many misconceptions regarding the daily work involved in our jobs. In kindergarten, most days, we have no parent support, and the numbers in kindergarten should be around no more than sixteen. It's been decades and decades and decades since we've seen that. We are typically at twenty students. And when you think of your kindergarten experience, I'm sure many of you can think of writing your name or playing all day. Throw that in the garbage. That is not kindergarten in two thousand and twenty-five. We actually don't even have time to play unless it's at recess. These kids are reading, writing, doing math, going to literacy centers, phonics, science, social studies. Kindergarten is the new first grade. And it's physically impossible to support the needs of all of our students with higher class sizes. And if we cut teachers, that's exactly what's going to happen. Gone are the days of teachers sitting behind their desks as kids go around the room, turning pages, reading from their Dick and Jane books. It's not a one-size-fits-all curriculum. The state keeps putting more demands on teachers, and we're burnt out. We're not just teachers who teach academics. We're teaching social and emotional issues.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in town who will give me their time?
No, there's no such rule.
Oh, that's sad. Well, anyway, I hope you don't cut any more from the education budget because we can't afford to lose any more teachers and support staff.
Thank you.
Thanks.
But right now? Yes, there will, right after the, sorry. It's okay. Maybe what you wanted to talk about.
We should, we'll point that out. Seems to be some confusion. This part of the public hearing is strictly regarding the budget. There will be another session after this for other issues that some of you may have that I wanted to bring up before the council.
Hi, I'm Noel Lavender, sixteen Lakeview Street. I'd like to talk about a few things. The importance of keeping our skilled staff in our schools, the importance of fixing the current and/or creating a new firehouse, and funding our senior center. I completely understand that the tax increase is extremely hard on all townspeople, but especially the low and fixed-income households. I live in one of those households. But when it comes to the quality of our environments, of our first responders, our educators, and our children and seniors, they are some of the most deserving of our unwavering support. Many points have been made and will be made about why these are important, including job insecurity amongst school staff being a liability to our town. There's no perfect solution, unfortunately. No one should have to pay more. No one should have to work in an environment that isn't up to standard. No one should have to lose their job, and no one should have to lose their favorite teacher or safe adult. Another point I think many of us can agree on is that our town needs more funding from our state, even if you won't think it would help, even if enough of us speak up to our district and state representatives, it could be noticed. We are surely not the only town going through this, so we need to come together and emphasize that unfunded mandates are causing a significant strain on their townspeople. It's causing us to divide and choose between two impossible choices, taxes or the quality of our town. It's not fair to anyone. So I implore every person in this room, every person watching this, every person in our town to directly contact our elected officials to help. It couldn't hurt. Speaking broadly, I'd like to talk about respect. Over the last few weeks and in two thousand and twenty-three, there's been a lack of respect of people opposing views, both in person and online. At the last meeting, there was confusion about, some confusion over the concept of applause, which I guess doesn't apply today. But some applauded only for those that they agree with, and that's okay. I understand and respect that. But personally, I tried to clap for every person who spoke. I know just how hard it is to have the courage to come up and speak in front of so many people, especially if your views don't exactly align with others in the room. You would hopefully clap for a performer even if they didn't put on a great show because you know they put in the work and showed up anyway. Everyone has the right to come up here and share. My personal philosophy is that you must, that not that you must earn my respect or prove yourself when we first meet, but rather, I respect you as a person, and it's up to you whether or not my respect fluctuates. But that's just me, and I wanted to share. I personally understand both sides of the situation and try to keep an open mind. Like I said, there's no perfect solution, and by no means am I telling you what to do. But at the end, please try to clap for everyone. But I hope you do the research, make an informed opinion, share it civilly, and try to understand others' views. Back to the matter at hand, I thank and ask the town council to send the budget back to the board for revision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Noel. Melissa? State your name and the address.
I don't want Dean to throw me out. It's supposed to be here. Melissa Engel, seven Markham Road. Thank you for having a public hearing tonight. Appreciate your service to our community. I know how thankless it is, and I know how well you're paid.
God, somebody does.
I have to say, I'm going to start by saying, having served on, in those seats for many years and been in the tough spot of having to decide what to send to voters and what not to, I appreciate the angst that you're going through. I'm a longtime supporter of education. However, I think a request of five percent, which equals about two million dollars on top of the taxes we already pay, is excessive. The average raise for our seniors, this year is two point five, I believe. I don't know what the rest of you are getting that work in the private sector, but as a business owner, I'm not giving myself that kind of raise. And while a wonderful standard of education is vital to our community, the ability to live in our community and stay in our homes is equally vital. Twenty percent of our population is now senior citizens. We have looming ahead of us a much-needed fire department expansion or new building. And we also have a task force looking to accommodate the ever-growing senior population. That population, by the way, is not expected to go down. If anything, it will increase. We're all baby boomer age here. And East Hampton is no exception. So there are things going on that we will need major dollars for. I also have a fun fact for you. I'm amazed that people don't know this. If the Board of Education had a budget of a hundred dollars last year, again, per state statute, you may not lower it the following year. So if you're thinking that this five percent must be some extraordinary need, and perhaps it is, that five percent increase is there forever. It does not go away. By state statute, we can't lower it. I don't know if a lot of people know that, but it's true. We can hack general government, which we've done so many times before, but we can't touch the Board of Education. And that's a tough thing to weigh. I think our general government budget is very fair. I think we're expecting an awful lot from people with a five percent increase in Board of Education. I implore you to keep all taxpayers in mind as you decide our financial future. Thank you very much. It's been great talking to you. Thanks.
Welcome. You're welcome. Linda?
Good evening. I'm Linda Urson. I live at thirty-two Jacobson Farm Road. And one of the things that I think that we as a culture need to do pretty much more than anything else is to give our kids a good education. But allocating lots of money and forcing hardship on lower-income people and the seniors does not guarantee a good education. We're looking at now going over forty mills. I don't even know another town. Well, Hartford has more than forty mills. But what we're going to be asking our citizens to do is to increase the mill rate by, I think it's two point seven, two point seven-two, going up to forty point seven-six per thousand in the same year that we're having a reevaluation, which will cause our houses to go up, because as you know, the housing shortage that was available pushed up prices. So houses that would normally go for three seventy-five went for four fifty, four seventy-five, five hundred thousand. There were bidding wars. The average tax rate or mill rate in the state is twenty-eight point nine-three. And we're going up to forty point seven-six. So we're going to be forty percent more than the average mill rate. We have too many needs in town. And I think what we need to pay more attention to is what kind of an education are our kids getting with the money that we've already given them and the additional amount that will go in this year. And as Melissa pointed out, really, under state statute cannot be reduced. So I would implore everybody to ask the Board of Education to tighten their belts and show us how an additional amount of money is going to give us a better education. And unfortunately, the superintendent is one of those like the boys that cried wolf. Every time I've gone to a budget meeting, the superintendent, the first thing out of his mouth is, I'm going to have to lay off teachers. It usually, in fact, I've not seen it happen. I've not seen ten and twelve teachers laid off. So I would really ask you, we need to spend money on education, but we have the seniors, we have fire department, we have a whole lot of other things, and we need to remember the people that are not wealthy.
Thank you, Linda. Next.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Chuck Yankner. I'm at sixty-five Spellman Point Road on the lake. I just want to make a couple quick points to sum it all up, and you'll hear all the details, but I'm of the opinion the Board of Education budget is out of control. And the problem with this is it's squeezing the rest of the town. You'll hear from the police department, from the fire department, highway, everybody. We have roads to pave. We have people to protect. We can't keep giving every year a larger and larger share of the town budget to the Board of Education. It's just not a sustainable path to be on. I would echo the previous speaker's comments that the superintendent is, is an employee of the town. His job is to submit a budget, receive a response back from the Board of Finance and the town council, and then to make what he gets work, not be in the River East lobbying and saying he's going to lay off teachers. I think that's totally inappropriate on his part. You don't see the chief standing up here saying, you're all going to get mugged if I don't get more police department. It's, you know, come on. So anyway, that's my point, is it's strangling the rest of the town budgets, and we need to be a little bit more even-handed on how the pie gets, gets delivered. Keeping in mind, taxes need to be held under control, too. Thank you.
Hi, Lori Wilcox, four Hawthorne Road. As somebody who does not have any children, I understand, we all have, you know, it's shared cost. We all have to pay for education. But as I understand, and I hope this is correct, the Board of Education hands in a one-line item budget. You know, no backup, no, or little backup or explanation. I know as a former registrar of voters, we were grilled on every single line item in there. So it's a little, a little discouraging that the Board of Education can just hand in one line item and then miraculously, at the end of the year, has money for buying students' notebooks. They did that probably about three years ago. And, and that's a little item. It's just an example. So that's it.
Thank you, Lori. I will point out, they, the Board of Ed submits a substantial budget package, both to the Board of Finance and the council.
Lily Cordero, thirty-two Hog Hill Road. Good evening. I am Lily, and I am a fourth-grade teacher in town at Center School. I am also an East Hampton High School graduate of the class of two thousand and twenty. I have lived here my entire life, and both of my parents also grew up here. We love this town, and we see all the good that the community has to offer. But every year since I can remember, the budget process has been stressful for parents, children, teachers, and the community. And it left many feeling uncertain that they would have a job. However, not that I can remember, never have twenty-seven staff of our schools been pink slipped. And I never thought that I would be one of those that would be feeling that uncertainty after receiving that slip. Yet here we are. I came here tonight to not speak on behalf of myself, but to speak on behalf of my amazing students who deserve the best. I understand the importance of consistency and familiarity because it was taken from me suddenly my senior year of high school. Online classes brought uncertainty and fear that were frequently felt by myself and my classmates in those last few years. Those feelings are something that I never want my students and school community to feel again. These children are the brightest and most amazing part of East Hampton. And if you take away some of the resources and familiar faces that they have grown that they have grown accustomed to, then this will negatively impact them. I urge you to take this budget back to the Board of Finance and come up with a better solution. And community members, please remember that we need to invest in the future of this town, and that means our schools and our students. Thank you for hearing from me tonight and for all that you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment?
Hi, Shannon Turner, 42 Spice Hill Drive. I am in agreement that this budget is too high and that we need to go back to the Finance Committee and look at reduction. I spent a lot of time looking at what financially this does for families in our town. I looked at mill rates over the last 10-plus years and the increases that we've seen in this town over and over again. And the last two years, last year with a 1.98 increase, it was, it was hard. And now we're looking at another hard year if things stay the way they are. Currently, the mill rate that we have is the 21st highest in the state. That means there are only 20 other towns that are higher than us. There is 174 towns to look at. And I know that we talked about this before, that like there are things in towns that make things different, house values, other ways that we earn our revenue. But if this budget passes as is, it's going to put us probably around 12 or 13. Affordability is probably the most important thing that a person, a business, or anyone looks at when they move into town. It's what I did. I looked at our education in this town, and I looked at how affordable it was. If I couldn't afford to live here, I wouldn't be able to move or stay here or bring a business here or any of those things. So people are stretched thin. It's too high. We need to look at this budget again. So I know that sometimes people are like, oh, it doesn't compare. The mill rate is important. It's what people look at to be able to know what they can afford in this town. And lots of people have already spoken, and I'm in agreement. It's no longer an affordable thing. And yes, education is important. But we need to, we need to find better solutions. So I just want to say, like, the increase for a $330,000 home, if we go through with this budget, is probably going to put about $544 increase in a family. And if you're already stretched thin, that's a lot of money over a year. So maybe people aren't doing the math on what we can afford to pay. But if there's, if there's no families that can live here because they can't afford it, then it causes another kind of problem. So and then, anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sal?
Hi, Sal Nusofora, 147 Colchester Avenue. Remember the Board of Ed, but speaking for myself, I really hate this budget that we proposed to the town. I've been here 50 years. I remember the days of 28-mill rate. I remember how the school system used to be growing up. Ms. Cordero, you look so much like your mother. I went to school with her and your father, same class. I'm willing to make the cuts, the hard cuts needed. I think the Town Council should submit the budget as proposed to 5% to the town and let them decide. At that point, rather than have the town come to you guys, the town should come to the Board of Ed meetings and let us know what you want cut. Because we can only do so many teachers. We're already down nine. Okay, as of, talking to super, as of right now, we're down nine. And we really can't do too much more without serious structural issues going on in how we run the schools. We're talking after-school sports, extracurricular activities. My main focus on the board for me is education and safety. So that comes first. Once we got that secured, then I'll start looking at other things for cuts. But if the town votes this down, I'd ask that town come to the Board of Ed meetings and tell us where you think we should make our cuts. Because right now, we're, we're getting down to the bare bones. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
There's two online.
Okay. Is that Mr. Turner?
Brian?
Hello, can you hear me? Is that a yes? I'm sorry, I can't understand. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, hi, this is Brian Turner, 42 Spice Hill Drive. My mom was a teacher, as were other members of my family, my college roommate, a number of my friends. And I really love teachers, I respect them. It's a noble career with an important mission and one that really should be funded. But as important as education is, it's also important to have empathy and compassion for our neighbors struggling to put food on the table, to keep the lights on, to pay that mortgage, and to satisfy the tax collector. If my mom was alive today, that career school teacher would have seen the wisdom in keeping life affordable for our neighbors in, in cutting back on spending to give others some financial space to breathe. Over the last month or so, we've heard a lot of school staff members giving passion speeches about not letting the kids down. Yet, an overwhelming amount of the proposed budget in question will go right into their personal checking accounts with a proposed $26,319,810 in salaries, including raises. Keep that in mind when you listen to their pleas for more funding from taxpayers. While I have no doubt they care about education, they also have a personal vested interest in acquiring more of our tax dollars. The student population in East Hampton has trended downward consistently every year from 2018 to present, and that decline is projected to continue well into 2031. While the numbers of students continues to drop, the previous school budgets have gone up every year. And once the budget goes up, as someone said, it can't go down by law. So every increase is permanent, and every year, a new increase builds upon the previous year's increase. And in turn, we continue to expand the taxpayer's burden. This year, the Board of Education initially asked for a 7.3% increase. Now, the Board of Finance modified that budget proposal and sent it to the Town Council for consideration. Some are calling it a funding cut, but it's not. It's still a 5% increase over last year of one of, one of, if not the biggest proposed school budget increases in modern history. Now, if the budget passes as it's currently being considered, your property taxes will go up quite a bit. If your house is assessed at approximately $200,000 by the town, your high property taxes, the bulk of which already go to the school system, will go up almost $550. Keep that in mind, as the taxes on our house have gone up on average about $200 every year over the past 10 years. Now, keep in mind that the revaluing our homes this year, the market values have gone up, as someone has already said, and that's gone up along with inflation, too. So it's very likely your taxes will go up even more based on this. I can't afford that. I don't know if you can, but I really, really can't. People are not calling for a cut in the school budget. Just a more reasonable increase, some empathy for those of us who can't afford more taxes. And I implore you to pass a budget that doesn't focus on building the school budget for the record highs, but one that works on keeping the cost of life in East Hampton manageable for the single-income families and for those seniors in that room that are living on fixed incomes. That's all I got for you tonight. Thanks for listening.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Rebecca Harvey, 39 Flanders Road. So I just wanted to say that I am absolutely opposed to this budget increase when it comes to the Board of Ed. For the senior budget, I am for it 100%. I would like to thank the superintendent and town manager for taking, between the two of you, two and a half hours of time to answer all of my questions and kind of give me some more insight as to what's going on. As a resident here for six and a half years, our mortgage bill just keeps going up. One-third of our monthly bills go to, or of our monthly payment goes toward, you know, taxes already. With every increase, that's moving more toward half. After speaking with the town manager, there is absolutely no promise that the mill rate is going to go down after, you know, the reassessments. It's a possibility. According to information that was shared with me during an online post yesterday by Sal from the Board of Ed, he actually posted that 87 homes are for sale right now in our town, compared to, say, Deep River with 17, which is a pretty comparable town to ours. I don't know if that's a reflection of our mill rate increases that are driving people out or what, but it's definitely something to consider. The small businesses that we have here in town that are also homeowners cannot take a double hit. Any way we look at it, extra increases on property owners or those that we think can afford it are going to trickle down to the renters, to the small businesses, to the people that don't own their properties. The seniors absolutely can't afford it. I'm actually asking either the Town Council or to give the superintendent an opportunity to clarify what was said about 27 staff members receiving pink slips. Because when I spoke with the superintendent, we were at nine with the proposed 5% increase, three of which were leaving due to a retiree, another one that, you know, we are down in enrollment, and the other one, a grant program is, you know, running out. But we're not losing what that position was actually covering. We are just going to go back to the old means of handling what that position did. So I would love for clarification on that from the town. Businesses aren't going to be able to afford to come here. Property owners are going to have to raise rent, like I already said. Those on a fixed income can't afford it. Education is so very important on so many different levels, but it's not the sole responsibility of our Board of Ed in our town to pick that up. This is when parents need to be more involved and not just speak. But if your child needs a tutor, get them a tutor. If your child needs more social, emotional learning, maybe get them into therapy. Yes, am I done?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I think I got most of everything out. I really appreciate your time and listening, and that clarification would be wonderful.
So noted.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who care to speak at this time?
Can I just stand over here? I'm really quite loud.
You may be, but it might not be picked up by the recorder.
I'm Sally Cosford Parker. I live at 30 Main Street. I've been to a couple of the finance meetings and now this meeting, and I hear everybody complaining about the taxes are too high, the mill rate's too high, the education budget's too high. But I don't hear anybody saying what it is the problem is. I agree that we need to give our kids a good education, but I see a lot of nice-to-haves in the budget rather than need-to-haves. We need to have teachers. I'm not sure we need to spend $90,000 on a set of bleachers. Last I heard, middle schoolers were pretty good at sitting on the ground. People can bring lawn chairs. $90,000 is somebody's salary. There's a lot of, as I said, items in the budget, not just for the school board, but other things. And if we challenge, why don't we challenge the individual items so that when we're talking to council and to the Finance Department, we're talking about things that everyone can grab hold of, that everybody understands, that are specific to our complaints and the needs that the town have? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to speak on the budget at this time? Going once, going twice. And we've, in the public hearing portion of the budget. I'm surprised. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Public Remarks. Anything but the budget? Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? Marty?
Good evening. As a former teacher of 36 years, it's interesting to hear all this. I have lived here 14 years on the lake, and I'm here to speak up for our jewel of the town. Our kids are fantastic. One thing we cannot forget is the lake we have. I am a, I just left the Town Council, or the Town Council, the Conservation Lake Commission, where I was about 12 years, working with different groups. And the last group, we have Chairman Chuck, has led the group to be able to make our lake safe for swimming and not having it closed. Last year, we were thrown with a boomerang in that we now have an invasive species, hydrilla. Somebody came into the lake with their boat, kayak, or somebody said, could even be an airplane, and brought hydrilla. And most likely, it came from the Connecticut River, which is really having a terrible time. Even the Corps of, Army Corps of Engineers is out there trying to stop it. So far, we have been doing inspections from Memorial Day until the end of the summer. Okay, our Sean, who's in charge, Muller, Mullen, is, had his workers inspecting the boats. But at our last meeting, or one of our meetings in December 12th, it said, there's nobody at Sears Park. From April, May, there's nobody inspecting the boats. I drove there today, through there. If I had a boat with hydrilla, kayak, or milfoil, what about milfoil coming to the lake? So it's incumbent on our council and our manager and the person in charge of the park to listen to the Lake Commission. On December 12th, we talked about this. There's nobody there to inspect the boats. A motion was made by Mr. Hartling, seconded by me, that the town should secure Sears Park boat launch and have it monitored when open to ensure only clean and dry watercraft enter the lake in order to control and prevent the spread of aquatic invasive species in Lake Pocatara, six to nothing.
Okay.
So I hope we do something in the coming days. Thank you.
And anyone else who wishes to make public remarks at this time? Johnson?
Leonard Johnson, 21 Long Crossing Road. At the April 8th Town Council meeting, we learned that, that, that in rough numbers, it was going to cost the town $2 million to acquire the building at 11 Skinner Street and another $16 million to outfit that building so it could be used as a firehouse. So that, that project right now is sitting at roughly $18 million, which is a lot of money. I believe- I I believe it deserves a referendum so that all registered voters can vote on this expenditure, not have a vote at a meeting where just dozens of people attend. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who care to make remarks? Sal?
Sounders for one four seven Colchester Avenue. Um, concerning the purchase of the property on Skinner Street, I am against spending two point three million dollars for that property. Um, it is in a Brownsfield location. I don't know, I I went to the last meeting and it says it was an agreed to appraisal. I don't believe it. I don't believe for a second that someone's gonna buy that property for two point three million. Let the owner of the property go and try and sell it. If it's, if this, if that's the appraised value, then the charge should assess that property accordingly, and let's take the tax money from that while he tries to find a seller. And I guarantee you, four years from now, that property will still be up for sale, and four years from now, I've seen the budget numbers. Our debt will be down and we should be able to afford it then, as opposed to buying it now, especially considering this is a very tough budget year. So I'm against buying that property on Skinner Street at this time. Assess the value that you've agreed to and to collect the taxes for four years and we'll try again. Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Last call. Close this portion of the agenda and public remarks. Moving on in the agenda, item six, presentations, Board of Education, third quarterly financial report.
Wonderful opportunity tonight to talk about this current year budget. Appreciate the timing and the audience. Yeah, we've had challenges over the past few years with the uh, our students' needs uh, growing. We've made tremendous efforts to try to develop internal special education programs. And uh, you know, the needs have just outstripped our our ability to keep up with them inside so that even though it's a very small number of students that are outplaced, it it is at a very high uh, cost. And um, so this year, we are overspending our budget by just under seven hundred thousand. That's an improvement from uh, my last quarter report. I I think I'm still being um, somewhat conservative with the, there are some students that are still in a pending situation where they have not yet received a placement so that uh, I think that as every day gets closer to the last day of school, we'll see some further improvement in this. About seventy-five percent of this um, overspending is related to special ed. The other items are things like um, you know, the same thing that happened to your electric bills happened to ours in a much greater uh, size, and so um, that's where we are. Any questions?
Questions or comments? At this point? What do you foresee? What what do you foresee and anything in particular happening?
I would think that the tuition may uh, decrease by not a huge amount, twenty, twenty-five to thousand or so at the most at this point, I would I would say. You know, the, we also have uh, a tremendous number of long-term leaves this year that are uh, greater than we've had uh, in in a long period of time, and so, and some of those are special education-related folks and the people have to be replaced. And uh, again, I hope I'm estimating at the at the high end at this point, but I I know that uh, that there's only another month and a half of school left, so that uh, there's not too much time to make this up.
Questions, comments from the council? We will probably be back to you shortly with other questions regarding the whole picture. Thank you, Karen. Agenda item seven, bids and contracts, discussion and possible action on the contract amendment for BHB for environmental services.
Uh, this next item is uh, related to uh, the environmental work that's been ongoing uh, at uh, thirteen Summit and one in thirteen Watcher Street and four Walnut Street in the Village Center. Uh, you'll recall that the town received approximately seven hundred, oh, not approximately, exactly seven hundred thousand dollars in uh, funding from both the state and from the federal government to cover uh, the project and the works that are going on there. Yeah, we have been uh, through the Brownfields redevelopment agency, as you know, bringing you sort of sections of the work uh, so that uh, each individual contract change and each individual adjustment uh, can be reviewed uh, and approved. Last night, uh, the Brownfields redevelopment agency was able to look at the proposal that you have now received in front of you uh, and review the work uh, that was being proposed and uh, ensure that they felt that they were comfortable with it and that it fit within the confines of the grant. Uh, they have recommended the sixty-two thousand dollar uh, amendment number three to the contract we have for uh, thirteen Summit and one and thirteen Watcher's reuse planning. The intent of this work is to provide the town with the backup data and a market study and a variety of other activities to identify what are the uses that are possible at those properties uh, in the future, what are possibilities that are likely to succeed? Yeah, I thought Kathy was timing me. What are the possibilities uh, for the reuse of those buildings? In addition, um, there is some work in here, as some of you have noticed, I'm sure, uh, for hazardous building materials review uh, so that we have, it's another piece of the step to make sure that we know what the remediation process is about. Remember, that's the fundamental piece of this, is making sure that we understand what remediation needs to be done on the properties. Make a plan for that, make a plan for how they can be reused, and try and find a partner in the private sector to work with us to make that happen. So, this is a recommended approval uh, by the planning, or rather, by the uh, um, uh, Brownfields redevelopment agency uh, for amendment number three to the agreement we have with uh, VHB.
Am I correct that this is not new money, this is just allocation from within the grant itself?
You are correct.
Are there any questions or comments?
No, I moved the acceptance of the year contract.
Contract moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion, questions? Not those in favor of the contract amendment, signified by saying aye. Post name.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Agenda item eight. Resolutions, ordinances, policies, and proclamations.
Well, you have none this evening.
Then item nine A, subcommittee reports and updates. Jack?
Yeah, the um, two fifty uh, committee. So last Friday and Saturday was Paul Revere's ride. And we're encouraged by the state, the American Fifty Committee was encouraged by the state to do a service project and to remember the ride. And so we did a food um, program at Stop and Shop, and we gathered food and money for the um, East Hampton Food Bank. Um, and so it was success. We had uh, several people from the committee and beyond uh, there to help with that, and uh, Paul was adequately remembered.
Any other reports, subcommittee reports? Moving on. Review and act and possible action on prevention partnership survey.
I'm gonna invite uh, our prevention coordinator, Brooke Clavett, back up to the podium and to talk to you a little bit about this. As you know, this is excuse me, a tabled item from your last meeting. Uh, the Board of Education uh, reviewed this uh, and with modifications, recommended approval, but I'll let Brooke.
Good evening. I'm Brooke Clavett, the prevention coordinator for the East Hampton Prevention Partnership. The East Hampton Prevention Partnership is currently in year five of the Drug Free Communities Grant and is in the process of applying for an additional five years of the grant. A part of the grant is conducting a survey every other year for students in grades six through twelve. The coalition has chosen the Youth Voices Count Survey for students to complete. The survey provides the coalition with East Hampton's specific data. This survey is important because the coalition utilizes the data collected from the student surveys throughout the years to assess future programming needs in East Hampton. The survey will be taken by students prior to May sixteenth. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions? Yeah, we all had copies or sort of copies of this. One question, um, do parents have the ability to take a look at it to see if they they approve how their their kids take it by any chance?
So a printed copy is available in each of the schools, and the parents can go to the office of the schools and they can look at it. They can't take pictures just because we don't want them like probing their kids with questions or like things like that.
But in fact, and how do parents uh, know that they can do that?
Um, I believe a parent square gets sent out and a parent, a parent square announcement through the school.
Okay, okay.
The equivalent of being of a note being sent home.
I already graduated, so I didn't. So, so that's good. The uh, or I just wanna make sure that the parents know, because you know, it is a rather in-depth delving into uh, certain habits and those sorts of things. And uh, I think many parents, you know, in certainly uh, in 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 town and in many surrounding towns uh, would wanna at least be aware of that. So as long as that's happening, that's okay with me.
Questions? Yeah, Jack?
So, and this is really more for the school than, um, so is there any? Um, has it been considered whether a child taking this survey um, could be harmed?
Um, I I think in having the opportunity uh, to work with uh, with Brooke, uh, as well as the Youth Prevention Council and the Board of Education, as well as the administration, I think great efforts are being made to uh, prevent there from the possibility of there being a harm. You know, I think that there is always the wonderings of whether or not a question is going to lead to perhaps inquiry on behalf of the student. But there's a lot of work that's done uh, through the Prevention Council, as well as through our uh, social emotional support staff within the school district to provide additional care or support, or if there are concerns of students who are at risk, that those are students that we would be following up with. So I I believe that all is being done to try to mitigate any potential outcome that could be harmful to students. But as was mentioned, and I know uh, in discussing with the board, you know, it's important information for us to glean uh, from our students, and the survey is done anonymously. Uh, so we can't determine who it is that completed this, but fortunately, it's the information that we'll gather from this that will then provide opportunity for the funding to be utilized to put, to provide sources, uh, which then further protect our students from many harms that may come their way. But I think that was one of the key questions that we had asked, you know, and the questions that are being presented is that the way in which they may be framed may lead to questions on behalf of students. So, thinking through what some of those questions were and how they looked, uh, the age appropriateness at the different levels of it, uh, we appreciate the fact that the Youth Prevention Council agreed that we would bifurcate the survey to a degree from what the students in grades nine through twelve would say versus what the students in grade seven and eight would say, uh, you know, because uh, we have our grade six through eight because there's different levels of maturity associated with it, some greater degrees of uh, of freedoms that students have where their exposure may be a little bit greater. Uh, and so we actually like the fact that we have been able to kind of make some modifications for the developmental ages for the students to further protect them from harm.
So I was wondering if there's any, I mean, this is not a new survey, right? It's been used in other places. And so is there data on whether any students have been harmed? By, I mean, I'm just thinking of triggers. There thing, questions in there that definitely could trigger some bad behavior or, I mean, harmful behavior. And so my question really is data. Is there data showing that this doesn't do that? Or is there data showing that it does do?
So there's no data that shows that. Um, over fifty thousand students have taken the survey in over twenty-nine um, towns in Connecticut. Um, so it's, it's a company, a well-known company that um, analyzes the questions and goes through different levels of like asking questions and doing research on the questions. So there's no data that shows that it would affect negatively the students.
You're saying that they've looked at the data and their analysis of the data shows that there's no negative, there has not, up to now, been any negative reaction.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Come right ahead.
So one of my questions is, uh, is this survey like a one fits all, or is there different ones out there? Is there different to choose from, or is this with the state places in there?
So this one comes highly recommended through um, a variety of different towns in Connecticut. There are other options, but this one um, seems to be the best um, one in Connecticut that many towns have used in like.
Have we gotten any feedback from any of these towns? I mean, I'm sure they can't share a lot of this. I'm just kind of curious what uh, parents and students thought of it.
Um, I don't specifically have like student and parent data. I just have like the um, like I've talked to other um, coalitions um, who have used, there is a company called the Search Institute um, which they highly prefer um, the Youth Voices Count Survey over um, the Search Institute.
Any other comments or questions?
Is is uh, this gonna be administered in school, on paper, or is it gonna be online?
It's through Survey Monkey.
It is through Survey Monkey.
And there's, there's no IP addresses that are saved or anything. It's completely anonymous.
Are any of the questions like predicated on conditional logic or anything like? Based on one answer, you get a different question, so not everybody's gonna get every question.
Correct. So if you say like yes or no to certain questions, they'll like eliminate others, so they're not answering all fifty um, questions that's
So it's gonna help identify the risk factors that exist, not present new risk factors to people who don't.
All set. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
As a reminder, pursuant to your policy, you do need to either approve or disapprove.
Does that need a motion?
We need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the survey as presented.
Okay, Jordy. Jack, seconds that. Is there discussion?
I I just don't like some of the questions, so I think they're irrelevant.
Alright. I didn't hear that.
I have some concerns over some of the questions, so. I have some concerns over some of the questions, so.
The parents cannot thought of this, though.
No further discussion?
Drive to school to look at the questions and take the time out to actually go through. You know, as you know, as everyone said, that they're trying to make ends meet. How many people are going to go to school, sit there, you know? The odds of the parents going in to actually read the questions to find out whether they want their kid to take it are going to be slim to none.
Further comment? If not those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Obed. Set count of six to one.
Thank you.
Agenda item. Nine. C. Discussion and possible action on extension agreement for eleven Skinner Street.
In follow-up to the town council's conversation of the last meeting regarding. The potential purchase of eleven Skinner Street. We have discussed and negotiated with the owner. For additional time to allow the council to review a potential plan for. Acquisition and build out that is more palatable. In short, and as the council has seen in a in a material sent earlier or late last week. And and now has in front of you a proposed agreement that would allow an extension through the twenty. Ninth of July of this year. So roughly a ninety day extension from the current agreed upon end date of the end of this month. It does, however, include. Requirement that if we so I'll explain it this way. First month free. Right? First month is free. The second month, the the seller is requesting that the town put down ten thousand dollars. That if we buy the property would be included against the price of the property, but is otherwise non-refundable. And if the town decided desired the third month of the proposed extension, that would be another ten thousand dollar payment. That would be non-refundable and would not be included in the purchase price. Additionally, there are some changes related to environmental conditions on the property. To ensure that the purchaser and the seller agree to a variety of things. So the purchaser, the town of East Hampton. The seller, of course, the owner of the property, the seller agrees that they'll finish their work in terms of meeting environmental requirements. As if they were selling the property for a commercial or a manufacturing use. They have done remediation at the site and there, as we understand it, are some either some items left for them to finish. So they agree to do that. Similarly, the town agrees that it will. Apply to be enrolled in a municipal brownfields liability reduction program. Which basically is a program that municipalities and other not-for-profits are eligible to enter into. Where once we acquire the property, any remaining environmental issues are. If you will, our responsibility, but there are no liabilities associated with them. And we have the accesses, as you know, as I just described earlier this evening, we have access to grant funds. And other dollars to help do remediation should we desire to do more. So that it can be a residential facility at some point in the future. And then the last thing is a relation is a change to the potential date for any transfer of the. Of the other two fire stations that we own and were part of this deal. To four years out, so basically the end of the year in twenty twenty nine, December thirty one, twenty twenty nine. That is the short of reading the agreement, that is the totality of the agreement, the balance of the. Purchase and sale agreement that was executed almost a year ago remains in fact in place. And the memorandum of agreement that was reached around the sale price and the inclusion of the two fire stations. Also stays in place, notwithstanding the changes that have been made here.
David, has the architect been. Sequestered? To be able to respond to. A new evaluation?
The architect stands ready to assist the town as it moves through a phasing review of that property, yes.
On number four there where it says the parties agree that the last date of closing on the two firehouses is December thirty one, twenty nine. Does that by signing this, does that solidify that we must give up the firehouses? What if we decide to buy the property outright?
So the previous agreements that the town has in place contemplated the fire station exchange as part of the offsetting for the price. As I think I alluded to in some conversations that we've had and I have discussed with the the property owner, I think it is a possibility. That if the town decided it did not want to sell one or the other or both of the fire stations. The an increase in the purchase price would be acceptable.
Right, but the way this reads it reads like you have to sell it by that date. And that's why I my question is. Is that in fact an ironclad that it must be done by that or can this be modified to say that we decide to do it? To what you just said before signing.
Based on the conversations that I had with the developer or the owner rather today. If that's something the town council wants us to pursue, we can do that and we can talk in more detail about that here if you'd like.
I just think four years to to force us out of it and have everything done is too long. And if we were to buy the building outright, that that gives us a lot more options. So I just the. Four years to turn over both stations, I I just think is a little rushed, especially with everything going on right now.
If you'd like, I can be more specific if it's something the council wants to entertain.
Will you say what you said again? I didn't quite get it. Something is too rushed. What?
Well, we have four years to get rid of the firehouse, which means we'd have to have everything done in. Because this gives us to twenty nine to get rid of both firehouses.
Yes, I read that, you know.
Where if we were to just purchase it, the building outright, then we have, there is no. Four-year limitation, you know, to have everything up to this sixteen million dollars. It gives us a little a little extra time and and we could always sell the buildings outright. And if he wants some, he could buy them at that time, you know. Whenever we're ready to turn them over, but this puts a ironclad, okay, you have to be out by, you know, four years and I. I don't think. That's appropriate.
Wasn't the first his purchase of the firehouses optional on both sides in the original agreement?
No, the original agree it was, it was somewhat optional. And then in the.
The price wasn't optional, but the actual sale I thought was up.
It was. And then the town council, then we had the appraisals of the properties and agreement was reached on. What the price would be for the three buildings in question. And as part of the agreement on those prices, the option went away. And it became the developer would get those properties at the price agreed upon as part of the deal. I'm sorry, owner.
So that's an oral agreement?
No, it was the it was the memorandum of understanding that was approved by the town council in November. That the totality of the deal became, we would buy the firehouse for two point three five five million dollars. We would sell the other two stations. On a very on a short timeframe, about eighteen months, we would sell the two fire stations. For an agreed upon price of round numbers, seven hundred and thirty something thousand, if I remember correctly, maybe seven forty five. We would sell those two stations. That became the totality of the agreement. And the owner of the property has indicated that if we desire to keep one of the stations. He would increase the purchase price to two point four five five million dollars. And if we wanted to keep both of the fire stations, he would increase the price to two point five five million dollars. So basically a hundred thousand dollars for each station. To take them out of the deal.
He was giving us seven hundred thousand for getting them.
And anticipating that he would do work on them and sell them for a profit.
Yeah, okay.
So he wants to cover, and that was part of his, the total deal on his end included that. And so if the town wanted to keep those stations for whatever reason, more time, whatever, we could. We just have to modify the deal.
Just just for the record, I'm personally not in favor of the price tag of fifteen or sixteen million dollars for firehouse. I think the condition of the building that is on eleven Skinner Street has. Current owner, when they roofing that, a lot of electrical work, a lot of other things.
Oh, I believe he's done a lot of work, but I also understand, but if it turns out to be a shelter or something else, that it may not be. Up to certain codes for a commercial versus, you know, an emergency shelter or. You know, fire or what have you. So there might be alterations that are needed. That are going to, for example, the roof and the trusses, and are they up to the same standards that. Would be required. For commercial, probably a hundred percent, but would that be for a shelter or some kind of other? We don't know. I just think. Tying the town's hands to come up with that in that worst case scenario, have to come up with sixteen million dollars, right? Within four years. After everything that we just went through in town, I think that that's just handcuffing the taxpayers. And I I think. If it's going to cost us two hundred thousand dollars more or whatever it is to to exclude the buildings. If we get to the end and we're good to do that, and maybe he'll take them back. We don't know. Or, you know, we could sell them outright as well. There's there's plenty of options, but we should leave those options open. Is my opinion.
Jack?
So help me understand. So we we do this deal and the sixteen million is off the table. So help me understand what is the plan? You know, what? If if we if we do this deal, we end up with eleven Skinner. And leave the other firehouses out, I don't care. But what is our plan for eleven Skinner? I mean, is sixteen million for over a longer period of time or is there some other plan?
The the purpose behind buying, if you will, three more months was to allow the council and the community. To develop what you're talking about, to really develop the plan. Is it quote sixteen million dollars over time? Sure, but. Instead of that having to be right now and debt and we pay that over time. It could be a smaller number now with modifications that may come as they are needed. That might be fifteen or twenty years down the road. And we won't need them now. There might be parts of that building that we might. We might redo today under a plan that causes us to spend sixteen or eighteen million dollars. That we might redo today that really aren't fully utilized for sometime into the future. And so I think what the council, at least my opinion of what the council was talking about was first, of course, the sticker shop, which we talked about last time. But secondarily was talking about how do we take a building? And make it responsive to what we need today? And how do we modify it over time? Into what we need it to be in the future, right? So there are things that we should do today if we're going to move any firefighters into it for whatever purpose. But they might not be staying there overnight, so we might not need bunk facilities, for example. But we still need to have. The ability to clean gear and we still need to have the ability to separate dirty parts of the building from clean parts of the building. We still need to be able to park trucks inside. We still need to be able to, you know, provide meals and have meetings or whatever. But some of that stuff might be a little bit more what I'll refer to as basic today. Then they might be in the future as we expand and grow and the department changes. But this gives us, the concept, I guess, is that this gives us the facility in which to do that. And this agreement gives us the time to develop what you're asking about.
So I guess I'm looking for what 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 is going to be delivered? To us within these three months that will allow us to make a decision.
The intent was, as I understand it, for the council and for the fire department and the fire commission. And to the extent the community the community wants to become involved. It gives the opportunity in these three months for the town council to develop the plan, a plan for what do we do? Ultimately, you have to approve.
Approve, but we there we have no capability of developing that plan. I mean, anybody here want to?
But I, as I mentioned, the three parties that we're talking about, along with the assistance of the architect that I referenced earlier. Together, just working out, how does this work? What do we need? What should we do now? What can we do later? And how much later, quote unquote, might that be to try and determine? What's the question we ultimately want to ask the community, right? Do we want to go to the community and ask them for? Just two point five million dollars or whatever the number happens to be, or is it something a little bit more? So that we can do acquisition of the building and as I mentioned, you know, those safety items or whatever the basics are. You know, to try and identify what's the question today? To get us into the building so that we have the option for the future in this space in the village center.
Jack, if you remember the last meeting, we talked about this and we were considering a resolution. To go to to vote, to go to the public to vote. That was with an eighteen million dollar price tag. And it was that high because we had just received it. The the projection of cost from the architect a few, just a few days before. We didn't have time to kick the tires and say, hey, look, you know. Eighteen million dollars is probably a non a non-starter here. Certainly, that's how I feel and I don't think I'm alone on this on this council, feeling that way. So the concept behind this extension was, okay, this is what we're going to do. Let's extend, let's extend the time we need to send this to 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 a vote. And let's kick the tires on this whole rehab, this sixteen million dollar rehab plus two. That let me finish. So that was the whole concept of. You know, what we were trying to accomplish because it was, you know, it was very irresponsible, I think. For the council to send to send that number out there without kicking the tires and saying, look, we do need new new fire force, no two ways about it. What is the best way to put that together? Economically and practically for the town. And we didn't have time to do that. This is giving us the time to do that. And as Dave mentioned, what we'll do, we accept this, we put together a task force or. You know, a group of all the players that that Dave mentioned. And within a month, two months, maybe maybe to take three. And say, okay, let's take a look at this. Is there a way we can secure the site? And make it palatable for a much smaller number than eighteen million dollars. I think that's the responsible thing to do. And. That's.
But what I'm trying to do is to get a little more specific. Because within the three months, you have to have your town meeting, right? I mean, that has to happen before July twenty ninth or whatever the date is, you have to have a meeting. So let's say it takes a month to do the town meeting. So by June twenty eighth. You have to have a plan that includes dollars.
Right?
Is there any possibility that the architect could actually deliver a plan that has dollars? By June twenty eighth or June twenty fifth or?
I believe I believe he can. Based on the preliminary discussions we've had.
The sooner we pass it, the sooner we can get to work on it and see if we can get a plausible. Plan for this. I think that's what that's what we owe the all the people.
What's your thought about not handcuffing and having to get rid of the fire department in four years? And have it be able to be added back later on? If that's what they come up with in the next three months. Right now, that's just handcuffing us. And we don't need any more handcuffs. And if it costs us two hundred thousand to do that, you know. To not be have to put such a ridiculous number out to the public, I I do think we should consider. Not to say that we, you know, after all the, you know, the three-month time, we don't go back and say, okay, it. Not to say that we, you know, uh, after all the, you know, the three month time, we don't go back and say, okay, it does, it's feasible to. You know, get rid of one or both. It just give the option open.
I agree with that.
I personally don't see where that's necessary personally.
Well, the, the question is, in this plan. Are you gonna be able to totally get out of, and I don't think Cobalt matters much. But the main firehouse. Are you gonna be able to totally get out of the main firehouse? Within the four years, I don't, I don't know how we would answer that now at this point. Cause we don't even know what the plan is.
I will say that it, it. We can acknowledge the fact that there is some uh, community discussion going on wha- around the idea of getting rid of. Uh, one or both of those fire stations. And it certainly does take the pressure off of having that conversation with the community and. Deciding what the right answer is to the, I mean, it's, it fundamentally is the concept of a closure of a firehouse. It would go from three to two. So that's an emotional activity for a community. To talk about the closure of a fire station and why that's okay or. Hear the concerns of why that's not okay and how they might be addressed. So from that perspective, it does certainly allow time for that. To go on without the concern. It also does provide flexibility that. If we, for whatever reason, only move one of the stations in for a little while. It perhaps allevi- alleviates some of the pressure on work. Inside the building, I suppose. If the council wanted to. Wanted to um authorize the execution of the agreement with a modification to number four to. Uh, essentially increase the sale price of the property and eliminate the requirement for the sale of the stations. That could be an appropriate motion and as I indicated. It's likely that the owner would agree.
I will absolutely make that motion to uh modify the purchase price and uh. Open the general property, the two firehouses for, for the three month period.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded as their discussion, earlier discussion. So the essence of that is to keep the two firehouses for.
On the, on the table for right now.
Is it clear what we?
If I may, I believe the, the motion was to um. Modify number four to include that the purchase price would be increased to two point five, five million dollars. And to eliminate the sale of the two firehouses as a condition of this deal. And to otherwise approve the agreement as drafted if I'm.
Correct.
Hearing what you said.
But I don't think we want, we necessarily need to have both.
Well, you have to, cause he, he wants a certain price for the, for the.
No, no, he was willing to do one or both, right?
That is true.
Oh, but we can always go back and we could always add. I'm sure he will take the firehouse in the end. This just leaves us hoping. I would guarantee that he will, it would go back and say, okay, I'll take the firehouses, eh? We, we'll bet.
I can't tell you what will happen in.
We don't know what's gonna happen next week.
I mean, that is true, then.
What did the uh appraisal?
Um, the, I, I think it might have said in here.
You said seven hundred thousand to both.
Yeah, it did. Um, I don't have my file with me, but yeah, they, they were, uh. One of them was, I wanna say four hundred and thirty-five, that would be fire one and fire two, I think was three hundred thousand, so. Four thirty-five or, or rather, seven thirty-five or seven forty-five was the total.
The comments I heard around town is people worried about fire, uh, department two.
About losing department.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to sink into the ground.
That might also happen. It is doing it as we speak.
That's the thing, you know, both of the buildings we currently have are not in the best shape.
Right.
You know, have lead, et cetera, et cetera. There, I think it was laid out, um, before.
Asbestos.
Um, and so to be honest with you, uh, I thought the original, our original deal. Here, where in fact it handed in, both the fire departments. Took a great load off the town, quite frankly, and I thought. It was a great deal.
I agree.
I was behind it, hundred and ten percent. I, you, you know, to add to that, I know that there is concerns. Uh, Cobalt, Middle Hattam people, I, I know, I know that and, and. Understand why they may feel that way. But then I believe it was presented to us that. The volunteers and the people who in fact drive the trucks to the fire. There are very fewer and fewer and fewer who live down there. I don't know if that's correct.
That is, I, I will, that is true.
And, and so in other words, trucks parked in Cobalt. Aren't gonna get to the fire any faster if there's nobody there to drive them.
But, okay, I, I wish, I'm gonna concede that, but I'm also gonna say. That if you look at the average age of Middle Hattam and Cobalt is quite. Senior for the most part, and what's to say that there won't be a recharge of families coming into those areas? And within the next few years and absolutely change that dynamic. So you, you're, you're saying only today. That there is no one in town, that doesn't mean that there will not be a tri- tri- changeover, even with eighty-seven homes for sale. And there's a good chunk of them in that area as well. Who's to say the people of firefighting age will not be purchasing them and want to? Be uh involved in the, um. In the service. I mean, you can go back and forth both ways. You know, you have company free.
So, I mean, I'd just like to make clear for me. Getting rid of the two hu- firehouses is the right thing. And, and keeping Cobalt or, or is the wrong thing. I'm only in favor of that option in order to give us more flexibility on the move. To make sure that we have enough time to do the build. And have the financing to do the bill. Uh, but once we're done, I think.
And that may be the.
Yeah, once.
But it gives us flexibility right now.
Yeah, it's flexibility now. There's nothing to do with Cobalt having a station or that being important or. The fire department, I mean. That's not an issue. The, um, they will respond into that area into Middle Hattam. Just as fast from eleven Skinner as they would from the Cobalt station and.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just gonna remind us of a couple of things. This all started, uh, with an evaluation many years ago, I believe. Two thousand ten to fifteen on the need for a new firehouse. And there were a number of years that were. People were looking for potential locations to cite such a facility. And this is, it became the best available. It's probably al- also. One of the only places in the community that would. Be able to house such a thing. When you really think about it. And so I, we didn't want to lose that opportunity. That's why we proceeded with the, the concept of the. Um, eleven Skinner. The other thing is the, those, the two existing firehouses, as you know, one, I think was built in nineteen fifty-one, that was Cobalt. And Barton Hill was nineteen fifty-seven. They're well over seventy years old. Or approaching fast and had issues and have issues. So we did not wanna lose the opportunity there. And the department and members of the, the fire commission came in with a plan. That made this an upscale that I would say to a, an emergency center. Is probably a lot of things that aren't necessary at this stage of the game. Getting the architect involved. And in my view, saying, this is what we have to spend. What can you do? And then take that to the public. I wouldn't, I would not. If, if I have any power over, take a sixteen or eighteen million dollar project for firehouse to the public.
You're here.
I just, there's just too many needs in this community.
Can we do a, a, a plan A, B, and C? You know, A would get us in and get us operating. It may not have the sleeping quarters or something. I'm not, you know, I don't mean to throw that out, but I, it's something, right? That would get us an operating firehouse. At eleven Skinner. B would be maybe adding, you know, obviously we gotta have a conference room and probably a kitchen to begin with, right? Uh, B would be maybe adding some other things and C would be that final ending point. So A would be to get us in, uh, get us out of the other, if we just choose that, to get us out of the other two existing firehouses.
I think the answer to that question will come the minute we pass this, get into planning mode. Get the architect in here, start asking those particular questions.
You know, what can we do with, what, what do we have to have, what's the needs?
What makes, what makes sense and, uh, because I think, uh. I think we got one shot at this to bring it, you know, to bring it to the public. I think, uh. Uh, we have to do the best we possibly can and financially.
And, and the back to Dean's point is it, it is, I don't wanna say the perfect location, but it's a very good location, right?
That's absolutely.
You know, and the building is right and, and Mr. Barton would be proud to have another fire truck parked in there.
So we have a motion, we're all good.
Any further comments, thoughts? Call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, abstain from voting.
Six votes yea, one abstention.
No.
Oh, there was a nay. Five votes yes, one vote no, one abstention. As amended.
Okay. Uh, we'll seat that modification and then, uh, get the agreement executed.
Thank you.
Good job.
Agenda item ten, new business.
From my perspective, you have no new business.
Any new business? Agenda item eleven, town managers' report.
As always, my, uh, written report is included as part of the town council packet and on the town manager's page, uh, uh. For the, those to read that wish to. I will, um, just point out two items that are included in, uh, the packet, maybe three. I'll just reference that, uh, you heard from the Board of Education regarding their, uh. Expenditures for the most recent, to the most recent quarter, uh, the town manager's report includes. Uh, for the council's edification and the public's edification, uh, the report that is given to the Board of Finance, uh, at its regular meetings. Uh, showing, uh, town government or general government, everything other than education, uh, to date, uh, through April ten. For folks that wish to look at that and see, uh, the status there. Uh, it does include, uh, the, uh, expenditures of the education budget as, uh. Business manager has said a pointed out. The other two things I'll mention are, uh, things coming up for the community, uh, to think about and to potentially partake in. As I mentioned to you last time, the airline trail, uh, gap project or the project to close the gap behind essentially public works and the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, is underway. I mentioned to you that there was a presentation coming that's now been set. For, uh, May sixth, uh, here at the town hall at four thirty in the afternoon. Anybody who's interested. In hearing about that project and hearing how it's gonna work and, and what the process will be. Uh, and some other information are welcome to come and hear, uh, Recreation Director Sean Mullin, uh, give that presentation. Uh, as part of, uh, his meeting that day. So six, May sixth, four thirty, uh, here in the town hall. It'll also be recorded, so you can watch it after the fact, uh, on, uh, I think that's part of the, um. Uh, Park and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting. Additionally, I'll mention that the Economic Development Commission is sponsoring a small business coaching seminar. They've brought, they've connected with and are bringing in, uh, a training, a couple of training individuals to give some guidance. And some support to our small businesses in town. So on May twenty eighth, that's a Wednesday. Uh, May twenty eighth from nine o'clock until ten thirty in the morning, those of you who have small businesses in the town are invited to come down. Uh, and to register for and come down to that event here in this room. Uh, get a little training and get a little, uh, some new ideas on how to manage and grow your business. So. Economic Development Commission's been talking about that for a while and, and finally was able to put that together and make that happen. Uh, otherwise, uh, the.
Mr. Cox, I just had you add one more while you're up there.
Sure.
Uh, about our village center, which is, you know, close to my heart here, cause I, I worked hard on that years ago and it seems like it was very long ago. But it, it looks like it's gonna come, right?
It's underway.
It's underway, I like it.
I don't know whether they actually broke up concrete today, but they're about to start that.
I'm very excited.
Might be tomorrow that they start breaking up concrete. Uh, but yes, that project, which is a, which is primarily grant funded. It's a one point five million dollar project to really redo, uh, pedestrian safety and pedestrian walkways, uh, in the village center. Uh, that. Project is getting underway that, uh, will, I think, improve the aesthetics there, but more important will improve the safety, shorten some of those crosswalks. Highlight that stuff and create some outdoor spaces that are a little bit nicer, uh, for our businesses to use.
Um, slightly related to that, do we have any dates in mind yet for when they need to do the work in the congregational church parking lot?
We do not, uh, that is a sanit- or a storm sewer project that's gonna be undertaken. And, uh, we'll be coordinating that probably with the same contractor who's working in the village center so that they can do them. Uh, time them together. Um, we're aware of some of the events that are going on in the village center, uh, in late June, so we're gonna try and make sure we can coordinate around those things. Matt Walsh, our Public Works Director is in charge of both of those things. And for the edification of the community, since we're talking about Main Street and Storm Sewer, that's the other project for the Public Works Department this summer. Once we finish up in the center. Uh, the Public Works Department will be working along the edges of Main Street, doing a pretty much an entire replacement of that storm. Yes, storm sewer system through that entire corridor, uh, so that that entire area can be paved, not this summer, but next summer. So all of Main Street from basically the bridge to Highway sixty-six and the piece of summit that we're gonna mess up will get all repaved. Uh, anew with fresh storm sewer underneath. Anything else?
No, I'm just gonna make one comment unrelated to this. When, when we get together and start going over the budget, there were a lot of statistics and numbers thrown out. By the public that may not be accurate. And I think we ought to. Make sure we're. Fully versed on those, such as eighty-seven houses for sale. There are a great number for sale. They are brand new construction to be built. And that's predominant, but it wouldn't, was made to look like we were chasing taxpayers out of town. And actually, we're bringing taxpayers into town. Pointments.
Uh, none tonight. Next time we'll have some.
Tax refunds.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to return, uh, four tax refunds totaling eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second back.
Any discussion? Not those in favor signify by saying aye. Passed. Public remarks, one last opportunity. Is there anyone who wishes to make public remarks at this time? There are no hands raised. There are no hands raised in my presence. We shall move on. Communications, correspondence, and announcements. I think the town manager has covered most of those and. Report from the various boards and commissions.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? We are adjourned.
You have no threat on that.